Is Michelle gonna be listening in after she's doing?
She'll listen afterwards, yeah.
She's doing.
Taking the rough minutes.
She's got her.
Got it.
All right, it is seven o'clock or twelve minutes later. First order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One hundred and eighty-three under our individual with literally fantastic power.
Okay, this nice typical winter night in Wisconsin. Next order of business is the consent agenda. The minutes in the bill and a couple of temporary licenses. Okay, I have a motion again in a second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Other comments? Limited to five minutes? No comments? Okay, hearing none, I will move on. Presentation from Marshall's office for a twenty-two annual report.
Great. My spectacle on me so I can see. Imagine that you had a chance to look at it and I thought I would just kind of breeze through quickly and hit the high points for you. Our administration personnel, we had a year without any change, but as you're aware, we fired Colin Dunn and he will be here in March. He gets sworn in and be introduced. I will not be here that night, so you know, I'm going to miss any place. It's two days out of surgery. I don't think I'm going to be ready myself up here, so Eric will be here in my stead. Again, personnel changes in last year were zero. Our officer always worked for a week, did not change, and will not change this year. We're just reallocating hours to accommodate Colin. To give an idea of the hours that we worked. Our training. We are, we do benefit by our association with both end agencies. A good number of this training does, does happen through, that might be why I said it doesn't. We, however, do ensure that our officers get firearms qualification. We do that three times per year. And coming up next week is an interactive range in Cedarburg. We contributed two thousand dollars this year to help Cedarburg maintain and keep that thing viable. It's, 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 for lack of a better term, it's called a Milo system, but it's a big video game. And it's interactive. And trainers can change the track of what's going on based on how the officer respond. You're required to have as part of your firearms program. We've done it through with Sredonia every year that we've done it in Portland. So it's good exercise. It's very cheap range. We're not shooting on ammo. It's just using the guns that are there with the game or the interactive, which I'm calling a game. It's fun. But that's coming up next week. The tasers, we have two of our guys here are taser instructors and their taser are in good shape. Those are warranted for five years and magically after five years they fail. Taser's got that figured out pretty well, so we'll be probably looking to purchase one or two somewhere down the road. Not, not this year, probably not next year either after. About fifteen hundred bucks a piece. Our squad cars. You can see the miles that are listed there. Our village ministry and I spoke the other day, I don't imagine we would need a new squad car to something like twenty twenty-six, which means we order in twenty twenty-five. At the bottom of the page, it says equipment. I think it's worth mentioning again that the body worn cameras, we do have body worn camera. We also were the first agency in Ozaki coming to have body worn cameras. We were the first. And we've maintained that sense. We are testing a, a camera that mounts in the handgun. I'm going to test it with one of our guns and see what, see how it works. And essentially it gives you the perspective of the handgun. So wherever that handgun is pointing, the camera will capture that. I don't know exactly how we're going to download it and keep, keep the data, but that's what we're trying to figure out. The whole range for this is about eight hundred and fifty dollars per guy. We're going to try one, see how it works, and then maybe over the course of a couple of years, I will outfit the rest of the people. If, if it's something that's fine, so we'll see what happens. What we found with cameras, I think across the country, is cameras don't necessarily catch police officers doing something right. They catch them doing, doing something wrong. I mean, they catch them doing something right. The cameras have been a huge benefit to us. We look at Cincinnati Plains and things like that. And allegations of, the cameras by and large, the officers are doing the business. And they're awful cheap insurance, awful cheap insurance. The twenty twenty-two arrests, speed sites were roughly twenty-five percent of the total. We write more warnings and equipment violations than we do citations. You can note the rest by month. Traffic accidents, we only handled two. Now there were more accidents here in the villages than two. But we only handled two. So the rest of, we can do that shares department. We issued twenty-nine parking tickets in twenty twenty-two, all for winter parking. We're roughly there now, this year already. The incidents, we had seven hundred and thirty documented incidents. Complaints by months, it's pretty self-explanatory. Complaints chart, that's also pretty self-explanatory. Our major accomplishments. Tracks in our interface with Midmarine Municipal Court continue to be accomplishments and that's just the way business is done now. Tracks again is an automated citation system that prints out a ticket. We don't write tickets anymore. We have all the policies that an agency is required to have. Again, we continue with our Midmarine Municipal Court. That has been an absolute success story. That's one of the first things I did when I came here is we joined the Midmarine Municipal Court. They're more responsive to the smaller agencies. There's more revenue that's forthcoming from them. They are, they are cheaper citations. I think a county ticket for us, our normal speed citation is somewhere around a hundred and fifty dollars. Ours is on twenty-four. And we're back. So Midmarine Municipal Court continues to serve us very well. On the last page on the initiatives for twenty twenty-three, we continue to work on transition plan for myself. And the establishment regular hours at the office. Eric's going to retire from port at the end of March. And then somewhere April, May, we'll look at establishing regular hours at the office where he's in. Particular days during the week for a particular number of hours, we will put that out so people have something or whatever. They can, they can stop and see us or call. So that's what we're working on. And one of the initiatives, last one was the additional officer. We've already done that. That's that. If somebody has any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're in the Midmarine. Yes, they're down behind the Texas road or that state, what's it called?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're behind that. Yeah, they serve, I believe it's thirteen different municipalities. They, they're a traveling court and they travel through municipalities and hold court. Our court is held in Port Washington in conjunction with Port Court. Ours is first and then Port South. Thank you, Chris. Anything else?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have party permits for twenty-two annual report.
Good evening. Or I say that twenty twenty-four is another business year, but I also want to represent the state of the town there. And so in twenty twenty-two, our members of the Rock and the Four of the Two Members. As that is two, that's two down from what we had last year at the end of the year. A good balance though with the fireflyers, fireflyer D M Ps and go through that. Training hours and the log hours that we had in twenty twenty-two was about two hundred hours in one month. And I attribute that to our increase in ambulance calls. Training was spot on, exactly with what we had previous year in twenty twenty-one. We'll jump down to twenty twenty-two highlights, the best to know on our, our numbers, calls. So in twenty twenty-two, fire and ordinary glass accident with sixty-one revolver, it's a five percent increase over the point twenty-one. Fire and ordinary vehicle accidents are getting together there, they're then giving reporting to the state, federal government, and all volumes. They put them all together and walk the road there. We don't separate those out. Twenty twenty-two, the fire and ambulance call, that's for the rescue D M Ps call. That is where our rescue truck leaves the station. These aren't, these aren't necessarily ambulance calls. They, they can be ambulance calls. Would be ambulance calls, but we keep track of these separately because our ambulance may be all developed and then loving ambulance has to come in. So we, we keep track of them separately. But there was a huge jump in that forty-eight percent increase. And that is here in our village. So our response here is to jump up that amount was given last year. Four hundred and twenty ambulance calls, that's a full point, point two percent increase. Again, we've been in double digits for the last coming years on ambulance increase, all volumes. Some historical records there, twenty twenty-two, top area single record, again. Just, it's just been crazy, the number of calls that have been going in or coming in. So fifty-nine we had that in twenty eighteen. Now we have seventy-one this year with fire calls and tons of rescues. This year, and our name was coming up here in March. You will see there's thirty years, thirty year member, Kristen, my first since the chief. And Wade Wonzler, who just passed here, took active honor instead. Fifteen years was current employer, president, took active honor instead as well. He didn't get active honor as well as Tuesday night. So what does that mean? Be around, not be certified firefighter anymore. But he'll be around, he'll definitely be on the danger for us, beyond station L O. Del, he's our old time D M P right now. He's got fifteen years. Got ten years from Delion, Ryan Pulis, five from Orange Tyler. And then here's the same thing right here, these new members, there's four new members this year. And every one of them has a new. Natalie Law and Nathan Law are, came in, they graduated from high school two years ago, I believe. And both of those guys are in our role of the health to see the current program for us. Well, not for us, for themselves, but that's what we want to go. And then Lisa Pauling was a female that came from Wyoming, enjoyed it. So Lisa came around running with us in one of the lots. And then Taylor Winburne was a new one too, that we picked up in October. Taylor was living in the area for the last two years and was firefighter and D M P certified and went to permanent class. Permanent. The killer is with you, with you inside and I told you. And then the last key there's all lines and graph. All right, you're, all the agencies are present tonight to acknowledge their work and thanks for all this.
Did you get in wind so far from Jason when he's going to reschedule our meeting again? On the next. All right, next we have industrial park design summary from our engineering.
All right, so I included there's a business park preliminary design summary of services in your board pack. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at it, but we got just kind of stepped through that. So we were initially requested to assemble essentially an agreement for the business park design services. With the provided documents, we didn't feel like there was enough information to really scope out a full final design. So we dialed it back to preliminary design. So essentially the intent of these design services is to scope out the overall final design scope. You know, figure out what type of infrastructure is, you know, what clients going to be needed, all that. So I guess I can just kind of step through the, the list here. We kind of broke into two items. So one is going to be kind of the initial scope of services. So that'd be kind of the, the primary portion of the agreements. The second portion is called additional scope of services. So these are essentially getting off right. So we wouldn't actually complete them unless, you know, the village wanted us to proceed with them and provide written authorization. Some of them are more optional, which I'll kind of get to, and some of them, there was some clues that maybe, you know, they had already been completed by another firm or potentially another firm was already contracted completed, so we didn't want to duplicate efforts. So I'll step through that once I get to it, but I'll talk through kind of the, the bulk, the actual scope of services. So it included topic, topographic and utility surveys. So the topographic survey would include the sixty-two acre expansion parcel. As well as the adjacent metal arc road area where the proposed intersection appears, where the new road will be connecting the metal arc road. Utility survey would include anything essentially adjacent to where we'd actually be making utility connections at the end of the phase one expansion of that roadway there and potentially at Metal Arc and Tower Drive. It, based on our initial look at it, it looked like maybe there's some potential to route sanitary sewer down to that existing lift station. But that would be part of the, you know, this overall public design, seeing that's really feasible in terms of the cost of doing that. Besides that, we would complete a sanitary sewer downstream capacity analysis and sizing recommendations. Including that, we would be looking at, you know, the feasibility of routing the sanitary sewer over to that existing lift station as opposed to installing a new lift station, which can be quite expensive. You know, I think just to be a ballpark range, you know, that's, you know, probably half a million dollars just for a lift station. Even kind of a pretty run of the mill, nothing fancy, you know, no structural house or anything like that, just a can lift station. In addition, we would be doing the water main modeling and science age just to, you know, verify that, you know, size water main, but in the ground there is going to be able to have capacity for the type of development that's going to be in the area. We would be providing one preliminary plan, due drawing, just of all proposed infrastructure, the overall layouts. You know, that would be after a discussion with the village, making sure everybody's on board with what we're proposing and, you know, don't have any other ideas there. We also provide a preliminary opinion of problem costs for construction costs, excuse me. So that could be used for the TIF financing purposes as well as any phasing that might be necessary, which is something we would look at as part of preliminary design services. In addition to that, we would be doing a preliminary screening, screening of any permits to be looking at like D N R sewer pack, anything like that. To figure out what actually is going to be needed and helping scope the timeline of actual final design. And then we would be writing a written summary letter of all the findings. Essentially, you know, just summarizing what the proposed infrastructure is, have one packet. And then in addition to that, you know, we understand it's a fairly urgent timeline here to get things on the ground. So, you know, with any type of development, you typically have solicited a geotechnical engineer, so we would assist the village with that as part of the scope of services. So we only be defining, you know, what the proposed infrastructure is, you know, and any other site constraints or designers that the geotechnics would be aware of. So that you can solicit geotechnical, you know, go out for R F P, get proposal from a geotechnical engineer and then we would help with that selection process. That's kind of like the bulk of the scope of services. And so total cost for that, which if you look at the second page there is forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. I'd say, oh, actually, you know what? I think I forgot one item in there as well. I'm not sure how that got missed unless it's just somewhere should be included there as well, but is one C S M as well to subdivide the site and actually split off the right of way. And then it sounds like there's been a couple, couple of developers that are interested or already have had discussions with the village about purchasing a lot. So, you know, we would put that C S M subdivided up to four lots, because that's the maximum you can do for C S M. So that would also be included in the initial scope of services. I think I forgot to touch on that before. We have a total cost for that initial portion would be forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Then the additional scope of services, that's, you know, if authorized, we broke into three items. So the traffic impact analysis, that's essentially who we're doing, doing traffic counts and evaluating, you know, projected traffic growth for this development. And, you know, helping decide if, you know, intersection improvements or something like that is needed. It's my understanding, I just got ahold of Roger yesterday and it sounds like there was potentially some discussion about completing one previously. As I understand, there was not one done according to him. And it's not, you know, there's no trigger like connecting to a county road or state highway where the village needs to complete this. I just include in there, if it's something that the village wants to consider, it's in there. If you guys want to authorize it, otherwise you can scratch it off the docket. The total cost for that though, for, you know, completing a whole traffic impact analysis packet would be ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. The second item on there is the phase one environmental site assessments. So typically this would be completed, you know, during the purchase of the site and essentially just looks at historical information and assesses whether there's any potential for contamination. Speaking of Roger yesterday, I also asked him about this and it sounds like it may have already been completed. I just learned that yesterday. He mentioned Sigma. I don't know if that rings a bell to anybody, and it's not something that I personally need to proceed with, you know, preliminary and final design services. But it's more of a liability thing for the village and when you start selling lots, you'd have this document that says, you know, at this time, there are, is no such historical evidence that there might be any type of contamination at the site if there were contamination found in the future. Sounds like that may have already been completed, so, you know, it could either be omitted or just not authorized as part of this agreement and we would not complete it. But I, like I said, I don't actually need that for, you know, proceeding with design just more. It's a typical, typical document that's produced as part of this type of site development. And the last one, which is probably the most crucial, is the stormwater management and grading plan. So as I understand, the priority is to try to get boots on the ground if at all possible this year. I think the one way I could see that potentially happening is, you know, completing the actual site grading and, you know, providing like a construction access road. I think just in terms of all the utility permitting through D N R and all that, it's going to be an uphill battle to, you know, even go out to bid, I think. Late fall, I think late fall might be more realistic, although I think that's something part of this preliminary designs are visible. You'll come up with the timeline for actually, you know, having bid packets ready and being able to advertise at that point. But the stormwater management plan and grading plan, that's something that is critical, you know, for assessing the site drainage, making sure, you know, that everything's going to drain the correct direction. You're not going to end up flooding your neighbor's property and anything like that. I know it's kind of, can be a sore subject sometimes. But as part of that, you know, it's essentially be, you know, providing preliminary grading plan for the overall site that, you know, attempts to balance all the materials. So you're importing and exporting, you know, extra material. I know that can be costly pretty quick. In addition to that, you know, doing all like the hydraulic and load modeling for any type of like ponds or other best management practices, you know, essentially just making sure that nothing's going to be overflowing and, and all that. But that's something that would be critical to at least proceeding with, you know, going out to bid for a contractor to complete all the grading and, you know, site access so that, you know, private developers could potentially be out there this year. So that's what's included in this agreement. If you'd like, I did print off, you know, some copies. If you guys want to see the actual official agreement, it should kind of just have more details and what exactly is included and not included. So I'm happy to pass those out if anybody wants a copy. But it's a long journey.
And I can discover from a finance standpoint, so to kind of paint a picture for you. You guys started about two years ago, you borrowed one point two million dollars to the tip. That was the first amount that you had borrowed for. And then you've spent down that amount to about a hundred thousand to purchase the property, build that little bit of road that you did. So we're sitting right now with about a hundred K for the engineering services that, that Isaac's talking about. On top of that though, we obviously started collecting income from selling these properties. That's definitely a nice win. And then after chatting with the rep with Ellers, based off of your current developments, so, so things that we know that we're going to be doing in that part. If nothing else happened, you have a borrow capacity of an, of an additional one point five million within the tip. Which means that, again, if nothing else happened, you could successfully pay back one point five million dollars of T I D stuff within the T I D over the life of that district. So obviously the more development we have, the more money we can borrow. So when, as we get to that phasing point, you're thinking about utilities and things like that. Right now, our magic number is what can we get done with one point five million dollars plus the sale revenue? And if that means we're only laying down pipes and then a gravel road, then that's all we do, right? Because we're not going to do a project and fund it with money we don't have, right? So that's kind of where we're at financially to kind of answer Isaac's reports.
Any questions or if anybody want to copy?
Take a copy.
Trusty Papa's question was about timeline. So as far as the developers are concerned, with the ones that have communicated back and forth with me, they're fine as long as they have a construction access road. That's what she was talking about. That's at the bare minimum. That's what they need to get into the site and start doing all the stuff they need to do. The, the only other part of this is, is the utilities, right? So if you're building from the ground up, right, and you need to do the utility, well, it's not getting laid until, until we do it at the end of fall. You know, that's kind of out of our hands. But, but again, that's why in the developer's agreements, we were very generous in the amount of time that we gave people. If you remember, the shortest amount of time is three years, the longest is five years. So even with that delay, the developer should be able to get it done. And if they can't, it's not their fault, right? It's on the village. So we can amend our agreement to reflect that.
All right, are there any other questions?
Thanks, Isaac, for breaking the soap.
Thank you very much. All right. So next on our agenda, we have reports. Reports from by the village president. He has nothing of any pressing value to report at this time. Do I move to the village administrative report?
Sure. Now that we got down to monthly reports, I think you'll see a lot more meet all in one report. So that's what you see in front of you, all the highlights, some, some items. Our village clerk officially started. Michelle, as you, you've all met her. She's been doing a really great job. She's very much by the book. Had done all of her training, follows the letter of the law to the T, almost to a fault, but that's what we, we love about her. So she's been doing a great job. We did the pre-test, the public test, organized file. She's ready to go for the election on Tuesday. That's very exciting for her. We've also put her in charge of updating the website. So as, as you guys might click and find things, please send those messages to her. If you have suggestions of things that you want to add, it's all great. There's no bad ideas. We'll keep messing with it. So we got audits. So the audit was this week. If you talked to Melissa maybe a week ago and you asked her how she was doing, she probably looked like she was a proud, proud mess. But as she left today, she was calm, cool cucumber. So I'm really proud of her. She did a lot of work prepping, prepping that stuff. We, we spent a lot of time in workforce, your bookkeeping software, kind of finding different reports and learning together, but we feel like we gave your auditors at least enough information to clean up twenty twenty-two and then put us on the right path for twenty twenty-three. So as what happens every year, they'll put together preliminary reports. We'll meet with the village president. I believe Trusty Garrick is going to sit in on that meeting. And then we'll kind of learn together what's your, what's some of the feedback gives. And then we'll, like I said, we'll implement the suggestions for twenty twenty-three. The joint EMS, I won't touch on that too much, but we're supposed to have a meeting today. It got canceled because of the weather and then we have another meeting. Hopefully that's going to get set up. And I'll just leave it at that. The D P W team, if you've seen them out and about, they've been doing a lot of stuff. A lot of maintenance, updating, organizing, cleaning of things and they're in their off time. So I give Eric a lot of credit for whipping his crew into shape there. And then when they're not doing that, they're out, you know, fixing wells and repairing streets and out doing snow stuff. The guys were out doing it today. They left maybe an hour and a half ago and they're, they're going to be back at three o'clock in the morning to do more snow removal. So huge kudos to.
uh, huge kudos to them. I did touch on my report that, um, Eric uh, is continuing to find different equipment items and suggestions. And I've just, I've just told them that, you know, let's place it on the C I P list. And then when it comes budget time for next year, it'll be one of the many things that we get to talk about together as a board. The, let's see, we had our meetings with Eller Strand, Ted, all that stuff you just heard about. Uh, we've had good, we've had good brainstorming meetings on conducting a youth mud run this summer. So I'll let, uh, Trusty Garrick share more about that later. Um, various meetings with the, with the state on the funded benefits package, which we'll review a little bit later tonight as well. Um, I'm starting to meet with municipal insurance agents. So your current policy is up in June. Um, I was asked by your incoming president to take a look at that, just to make sure that we're getting a good deal. Uh, I think it's been a while since you've gone through any sort of R F P or bidding process. So, um, I've met with your current one, Ansi. I met with M P I C and then there's another one, um, called Cities and Villages Insurance. Uh, that I'll be meeting with soon as well. Um, let's see, residential building fees. So if you remember, you guys have approved the fee schedule for our, for engineering, surveying, planning, that kind of stuff. Uh, but we didn't yet tackle the actual residential building permits that people pay when they work with our inspector. So, uh, Michelle and I sat down with your building inspector, John Diller, and literally went through permit by permit and, you know, asked him, we looked up, we did research to compare to other, other municipalities. What were they paying? What were they charging? I would say maybe fifty percent of your rates were pretty competitive and normal. Um, and then fifty percent of them just needed an adjustment of some, some sort. So, um, we put together those recommendations. Uh, we just reviewed it with President Doorward today and we'll be bringing that for you guys soon. Um, and then what's, that's adopted, what's the coolest part in my mind is that if you've ever tried to get a permit in our office, you might know that we have like five different permit forms for different things. Um, so Michelle being the organized person that she is, she has got this now into a one-page front and back permit. And it's all of the options that you could possibly choose from and for residential construction. Um, and then once you guys approve those fees, it'll have the associated fees with it too. So it's a very easy document for a contractor to pick up, check off which projects they're gonna do, add it all up at the bottom and then say, all right, here you go. This is my fee. Um, so that's going to alleviate a lot of stress. I know that John is very excited about that too. Um, the other piece of this is that we're going to put more responsibility in John's hands. Truly, as your building inspector, it is his job to ensure that things are inspected, um, that things are up to code, that permits are getting processed from beginning to end. And so now that he, now that he'll have that document in hand, he feels a lot more competent that he could do that. Um, which, which is appreciated as well. Um, I'll, I'll add to that, just to give you guys a heads up that with that, he, uh, he rightfully so is asking for a change in how he's compensated. Right now he's getting charged, it's like thirty or thirty-five dollars, um, per, per inspection. Now he would get charged for flat fifty per permit. So regardless of how many times he needs to inspect, right? He's getting this flat fee for this, for this project. So, while it's a little bit more money on the per fee, uh, actually being more of a savings, because again, he was charging that per inspection that he was doing instead of just one completed project and getting that lump sum. And that's obviously covered with the increases in fees and stuff that we're doing. Uh, so anyway, all that'll get back to you in March, but I just want to give you guys a heads up on that. Um, I think that is it. I just want to turn to this colorful spreadsheet that you guys had at your desk. So I let you guys know that I would be bringing forward some sort of monthly financial summary. Um, so as you look at this, this is just a very, very high level where we're at every month. So these numbers are reflective of, uh, the very end of January. So you'll see the green column is general fund income and that's broken up by the taxes that are going to revenue permits, blah, blah, blah. Um, so we've collected four seventy-nine so far there. In general fund expenses, when you dial it down, we spent about forty-nine thousand. And then you have the other fund income in the next two categories, which is the fire, the TID, sewer, water, C I P and the paramedic fund. You see, we started to collect incomes there and then it started to have expenses as well. And then the bottom, it all rolls up into total incomes of seven sixty-five versus your total expenses of ninety-five. So don't get too excited. Obviously we're at the beginning of the year. And if you've looked at your, um, your invoices that you get approved tonight, we're spending a lot of money too. Um, and then on the far right side, you'll see the budget. So this is the budget amounts that you guys had, had approved rolled up. So hopefully every month we'll be able to track this and you kind of see the, a budget actuals of where, where we're at. Um, so hopefully that kind of paints an easier picture for you guys than maybe some of the reports you've been getting in the past. So, I think that's it. Any questions for me?
So we might be doing some minor amendments as we go through the.
Say it again.
We might be doing some minor amendments as we go through the.
That's, yes, that's a good point. I think I talked about during the budget.
The rate type of thing.
Yeah. So during the budget process last year, I think I talked about probably every quarterly, we should pass resolutions to do line item transfers. It's called, so you pass one resolution, right? Saying, yeah, we should have had more money here.
So we know those kinds of things that you see. Yes.
Yeah, kind of a one look at where we are. It's kind of like a one look at, well, where are we right? Well, we saw on here. So I like this. This should be a alternative.
Building implements. Um, so in the village, you can actually do your own electric and stuff like that. Did John say anything about changing that?
So on the permit form, there's a spot where you have to write your certification number down.
Yeah.
So if you enter your license on that form now, so license under work, you left for it to be used by. Well, my person.
So inspection, when downed of them, that's great, but without having a professional person on that permit. It's still on the whole more or the contract.
There's also a concurate statement on the two that, that states that. What else?
Yeah, it seems like that's going to be run more as a department with a department head. And then, yeah.
It's got decent commercial also. Right.
All right. Any questions on that? Thank you. Um, Marshall's regular.
Um, trustee Garrick, I wanted to go. Do you have any questions?
I let, looked at it briefly even before I came here and satisfied. Thank you.
Um, there are a couple of changes to, uh, the report. Regular report by Smither while back. We did a K nine search of the roads on the A steel in conjunction with the sheriff department on February third. I think I've been to know if they ever do that all two times. Was assisted that. Um, revenue, I got the final revenue for twenty twenty-two, we came in twenty-nine eighty-four. So if I figure out an eight-year average, that's thirty-four seventy-one. And then just, uh, two other notes. Eric here, they're working on two projects. One is with the village, getting this market office on the website and having a dedicated page for the market office. And the second thing Eric is working on. He's more still with Tom than I am. He's coordinating with the Lions Club to, you know, obtain a donation to purchase a B P I P. Um, unit. When I first came here, we had an agent on that had no support anymore. Over the years, the response time from the fire department and our part-time status. We never did respond to the work that we're doing. Honestly, I haven't donated and then, uh, some supplies and things belong to the. Eric's handling those things. It's second week in March, in the middle of the year, second week. There's two other problems.
All right.
We don't have anybody, but okay. We got the two supply cards, two supply cards, we want which means more often to the start of the prime play, call the prime grid supply and we can create another one.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you guys are always there first.
Usually, yeah, usually. Um, to be honest with you, since I've been here, we haven't, we haven't, I don't, at occasion we use one. But it actually did come up a while back. We went to the fall for the county. Uh, and the gentleman was having, so it turned into an advantageous stat there. It, it, it all worked out, but, uh, it's there about, we're looking at about two grand, two by hundred, you know? Or twenty-five hundred bucks. And then we want supplies that come with the ads and values and the checks.
So what's the one that we have on the wall? Say, if we take that one.
That's yours. You want to keep that here?
Is that connected with the project department or is that just a?
Most buildings now.
Yeah, we had, we had a big problem that we couldn't find and we narrowed it down to, to them. Units, so. Anyhow, we found it.
I wouldn't submit to you that, um, we can, we have the rating in it and we can acquire a harvest training, but anybody who can read and look at a picture can use that.
It's fairly selfish.
Tells you what to do. And there's pictures. It, it's not rocket science. It's pretty simple.
Actually, once it's hooked up, it doesn't do anything unless it needs to.
Yeah. We had one on, yeah, on Sunday.
Yeah, that's the beauty of it, man.
Anyway, that's all.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you much. Yeah, we'll do. Um, very cheap, just put.
So in the monthly report that I threw, um, you guys was about trading, um, so fire trading, um, the air fat rating act, paid our work, um, that's stayed with our fourth line, three tools, month of business meeting. I hope you guys know this more detail. Um, so the second two different amount, we have a monthly business meeting where we sit down in the, in the meeting room at the firehouse and talk about all the different things we've uh, had going on in the month. Uh, often we go all the reports, the quality of training and that's pretty good. Uh, and we typically will do our monthly, uh, vehicle, it's only, it's a small company. Uh, we'll, I'll change all and all that stuff. Um, so we updated membership with the information that we can sleep donation rather than our most uh, five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars also from now on and serve the house. Um, challenge in January, long-term firefighter, the end of us to honor our status. Um, so John's another one that did honor his status in the last three months for us. Um, radio system update. Uh, we did convert the radios over to eight point five and the radios that we've got. Um, we're waiting on to send out a program for those which is new channel. And then there's going to be a lot of trade through our members. Um, when that happens, because we are going through a totally different system. Um, right now each, each party of our, at its own little silo, um, radio channel system, we're going to be going to a tone by where, um, report part, we're talking, so it's going to be different.
So is this a final application? Everything is done in the full time and then we started back in seventeen? I remember we started that.
I was wondering. Radio, the radio can have another version of Arizona, probably the radio that's developed. Located, uh, forgotten, uh, we don't get any luck in that very large program where we had, I always talk about different meetings that we have. All municipalities and where we're at, higher employees and things like that. Uh, we review the lab tech software, lab tech is news off, going to be a lot for our schedule scheduling. We, we used to write everything on, we had a paper calendar and we hand out to everybody. Um, this is, uh, can't say app, it's a program online, but now everyone has to go online and see who's on call and if there's a vacancy, I can sign up for. So it's a live, living, breathing thing now that we can see who's on it. Uh, this will be, this will be very, very helpful when we get into the paramedic program, because that'll schedule the software to be working. Um, so that's the lab tech. Thank the membership for participating in the capos, kids, kids, kids to kids to employee drive. We do that every year with our association. Um, our members all bring in toys and then, um, the entire county fire police, uh, all first responders start over at Seaver Station two and they travel over to Capo with all the toys. So in January, I thank everybody for the participation in that again. Uh, that is a huge thing to be always do every year. Um, updated review of the dispatching team that happened after January first. After January first, we, we sent out dispatch in December and talked about things that we can do to streamline the name their licensing here. Um, we get into that lot of noise of being seen and then all the time, just the best we thought could do. And, uh, nobody ever wants to change. We have to set out dispatch uh, office and talk about changes that have been done and things their licenses, we're into this far as paging, how we communicate so that, you know, that there's no. Uh, and so we just try to make things easier. So we had some changes that happened in January first. And then I shared with information on our community room change. We were running that unit that moved out now. Um, made everybody aware again and didn't begin this past Tuesday night when we got our business meeting. Snaking to everybody in the stand there. That hard on Tuesday night is put outside of that. If you want to have a meeting there, you have to conserve this like everybody else. Um, just so we don't have any flash there, you got a good one going on. Uh, E M S training, uh, going practice development, um, and you're going to see her all the time, joining practices and developing as part of the E M S practice, the annual practice, most of the practice. Belgium has a same medical control as, so our medical control is Aurora Health. While we get that right now is with, obviously areas. Um, so we practice development all the time and that's the light and what the medical control is there. And Aurora comes up, presents stuff on a regular basis for us, so that we can keep our license. Aurora was out there, uh, in the, and again, that's very new in January and probably the friend who asked who's system in the reverse team. And then engineer trading, we're on dry business, um, dry business are the things that are down river. Uh, we have a dry heifer on the north side of the H, down by the water park. Um, that is a site that goes down into the river that's called Dry Heifer and guys in operations on the bed. Uh, that's able to even during winter months with the sub water of, of um, there are a lot of places on the river. So they work at Dry, Dry Heifer operations here in this. Call lines, um, one or two, all, both recalls about last year in January, so there's some comparison there with the notes that I had. Typical, so everything's increasing the call lines. The hundred anniversary event, that's not on these notes, uh, they're not on here notes. Hundred anniversary, I don't know. A couple of meetings here, but we had a change date on the anniversary to the twenty-sixth of August. August nineteen, when the initiative came, someone tried to run this down. And we were, we had a previously, by the end of the day, we continued to do the same again. So we just decided that we didn't have to switch it. There's a third nineteen, where it was.
You got another prayer or a prayer for it?
Already did.
Oh, you did. It's all set up.
Good.
Uh, two percent fire new dogs. So every year we did one to the state. Uh, this year was eighty-one timers, going from eighty-one hundred dollars, when we get in the state, that is a, uh, piece of money that we get from the insurance. Fire and said, oh, we're the property paid in the village. Uh, and then that comes to us as people said, do they call that? Uh, with that comes along a lot as, we never thought we would state. Um, and we had that anticipated and that went very, very well. Um, there are some things that the project that they normally give out and, um, you guys have talked about how to take credit for more of our education we do. You know, the Facebook page, it's not a lot of stuff out there. We need to take credit for that. That's all the guy gave us. Um, fire interaction, we can be a little bit better on it and work on that, we'll plan in place for that. So the two percent do's of the state went really, really well. Uh, it was scheduled for two hours. It actually lasted twenty minutes. Um, we downloaded all the documents that we needed, uh, last Tuesday, which is a little bit given at a time. Uh, and then they asked to marry Paul's with his crew. They were not stationed this week, this week, last week, last week, and prepared a lot of the over that was coming on firehouse on the side of the fires. Knowing the building fires between sixteen and five, from seventeen, I don't think the rights, um, landscape pieces were put on the front of it. Got them losing some of the firehouse that, and then coming down, nothing belonged to this. Um, and, uh, we get some shrug every project. Prepare those and, and working on our association. On that.
Maybe we can do something in conjunction with Arbor Day to, uh, revamp that area there. Cause yeah, those things don't belong there. They just grow like nuts. Right. Right. Any other questions?
And then at some point, I know we're gonna go with the next week, we gotta go with the face to get it. You gotta get it done next week.
All right. Thank you very much. You have anything to do for, uh, for Eric or public work?
Uh, well Eric's report's in here. I'll just add that they also had an audit, they did three audits in the past few weeks. They had a water audit, uh, that went very well. Um, and Brandon was able to sit down that too, fresh out of his training, which was great. Um, speaking of Brandon, he, he attended his, um, in-person. Went very well and then had a fi- final kind of pre-exam wrap-up uh, video class that he did, um, earlier this week as well. That's he felt competent in, and so we're looking to schedule his official test. So please, if you see him, you know, wish him luck, tell him it'll be okay. Help him study maybe a little bit more, uh, but he'll, he'll do just fine. So good stuff.
All righty, clerk and treffer. Melissa, later on in the agenda will be approving, moving different insurances from our current carrier to the state. That was, uh, Melissa putting a lot of time to migrate that coverage. And, uh, the state is doing it a lot cheaper and whatever. So more benefits have been on stable trend. There any on those? Okay, county supervisor report, we won't have right now, uh, parks and recreation, yeah?
Uh, yeah, so Parks and Rec Committee met on the eighth primarily to go over, uh, the idea as, as our administrator had said about doing a mud run in town. So we met with the Parks and Rec Director from West Bend. Um, he put on a really good presentation, showed us there were, you know, the success of their overall program over the last however many years. I think it started at a little over, what was it, five hundred kids or something? And then all, all the way up to they're expecting about three thousand to do it this year. It's a good opportunity for community involvement, which everybody here knows that I'm all about. It also raises some money for, for their community, which is great. Um, it allows them to not have any, if I'm, I'm mistaken, they don't have any parking rec fees for different programs throughout the summer, correct?
Correct. So well, well, hold on, there's no, they're not on the tax levy, so they, so they don't utilize tax. They still have fees for like classes and things like that.
Sure, sure. But, uh, anyway, so we met, looked, looked at some different opportunities here in the village, different places that we could maybe utilize, uh, to do a mud run here. So we're in the very preliminary stages of it. We did have, uh, another, you know, brainstorming session that we talked about. Um, it was Chris, Director Paulus and I, and then I can't remember, it's on there? No. Yeah, Tiffany, that's right. She's on the phone. Everything's a blur today. I apologize. But, uh, we're, we're getting further in the planning process and if it does work out, um, I can't stress this enough. It has to all fall into place in order for it to happen this year. Everything has to go kind of perfectly. If it doesn't, we're okay with that too. And then not doing it and possibly thinking about doing it the following year. Um, but as of right now, things are kind of looking up and as long as the planning goes the way that it should, uh, we might have an event this summer, which would be a lot of fun. Oh, yeah. Yep. Well, that's excellent.
One down.
One down, so. So yeah, we'll have more updates as that goes on. Um, and then just kind of a recap, we did have the movie in the park that while in the school, I guess it would have been last week, Thursday, we did that. It was attended twenty-five, thirty-five people, not bad for a bad weather day, but, um, it was a lot of fun and the kids that were there seemed to have a blast. So uh, that's all I have today.
I had a question for you, Dan.
Yeah.
The day program that does, that we were, that ran at the park like last year and stuff, what's going on with that? Where are you guys at as far as, you know, because there was issues?
Yep.
So what do you know about that?
So maybe Chris can touch on this a little bit more too. We have already had conversations with the school to see if they would be interested in doing some staffing. Um, I haven't, I don't know if you've heard anything back from them.
So I did.
Okay.
Very recently.
Sure.
Um, the initial appetite is that their teachers are already overworked with summer school. They're having trouble getting their own staff to come back during the summer. So to add on to it would be a difficult. So the plan B, again, if you had wanted to do this, your plan B.
You go out and hire a summer rec director, you know, the N F line, you're a lot of money minutes. And to your point, that you said, okay, that whatever we hired or we make sure that the registration, these other efforts, right? At least they can break even, making some money, at least, you know.
I'm all for that. It's just that the, you know, the issue that happened last year cannot happen again.
Well, and I think we settled last year and I think, I don't think we should have done that. We should have been prepared to say, no, we're not doing it this year because we didn't find the help. And I, I will be the first to say, I believe we have already come to that conclusion that if we can't find the right people, we will not have a summer parks program this year.
Yeah, which really stinks because a lot, a lot of parents kind of plan on, you know, that.
It does. I think I, I would say that we're not unique in this situation. There's a couple of other communities around that have done it, uh, that have considered doing it as well. So, um, we'll see what happens. Hopefully, hopefully we don't have to cancel it, but we have to be prepared to be able to do that if we can't find somebody because we don't want a situation like last year.
If we hired an individual, are you gonna work in conjunction with Port?
It still would work in conjunction with. Correct. So the field trips would all be organized and whatever through Port Washington, just like they have been in the past. Hopefully our directors would show up this time. Um, but yeah. That'd be an expectation.
So who's gonna be working on that? Because I mean, you are.
Yep.
And, and to, to Dan's point, I mean, we're, it's in crunch time. If you don't find somebody
Yeah.
in the next month, then I agree, we just don't do it.
Right.
Cause I'd hate for you guys to scramble and find somebody who's lackluster again, just to try to do and put together a program.
There have been some parents that have said that they'd volunteer. So we'd have to look into that as well. Um, maybe we throw that out there as well. If there'd be people that would want to do that, we did get that a lot last year. So.
Cause you guys had a lot of kids there. I have to stretch this out, but there was a lot of kids there.
Yeah. Then Roger and I ended up working it. So then Roger and I ended up working it the last week.
I know. Lawrence. I, I believe me.
That was terrible.
So we're, the, you know, that, the mud run, is there a scheduled thing? Are you still hoping that we?
Still looking in, into it. So our general problem is, not problem, it's a good problem to have. We have a ton of things going on in our parks in the summertime, right? So between different events, celebrations, leagues or whatever, trying to find a weekend or a day in a weekend, that's not going to disrupt everything. It's been a little difficult, but we're preliminary looking at some dates in July.
Yeah, and involve a serious to, to that.
Yeah.
So that should be worthwhile. All right. Thank you. Um, next to join DMS committee, that was, I think that we had, um, dinner and thirty percent, we met at Square House with the four different, uh, village and town representative groups. And went over a few things, went over the, the language so far in the joint agreement that will be shared and signed by all four communities. Um, there's a little bit of, uh, language that we looked at and changed and I think that's due to go back to the attorney to get finished and whether, so. Uh, we'll, they'll be getting that back and we'll be seeing them when they're satisfied that it says what they want to say. So. And we didn't have a chance to, uh, go down and talk to Jason at the county today and we started to wonder if he doesn't want to talk to us or if, um, it's just unfortunate circumstances.
He did suggest additional dates, so.
And, and I did talk to my honor bar's chiefs from the president, and what I understand, there has been zero participation in this. So nobody split it in one piece. We are kind of the first ones that have actually added the meeting, what I understand with the coming as to how this is going to be working forward. So kind of getting the role, I guess, of, um.
Why don't we all shut to do that?
Just cause we want to learn faster, but I, uh, but I did, did understand, what I'm hearing from the chief writing the ground and soccer player, she, he said that, uh, he was looking at during the potential, this one for us, and he was, uh, I'm guessing, he said that it's on his back to get one, this is love, but you saw that in the first one.
Uh, oh, you gotta be spending this stuff like twenty-four.
Uh, yeah. It's got a.
Yeah.
That's just at the apartment, uh, figure it out.
All right. You have anything else on that? Okay, we'll move on. Um, okay, then we have this discussion and action items next. Number seven, okay, item A is motion to approve resolution designating public depository and authorizing withdrawal on county city, village, town and school district monies. In other words, transaction fee of the transaction. Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. And are there any questions? There are none, I will call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of course. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, next we have motion to approve fireworks permit for chrome fireworks and display. So moved. Second. And a motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Of course, has been carried unanimously. Um, approved Community Rivers Program proposal.
Is this the same financial amount as it's been in the past? Does anybody recall?
That's pretty much similar. And they just make the activities fit, uh, but, uh,
Right.
They'd like to keep their due or whatever you want to call that to be rather consistent and rather inexpensive.
No, that's fine. I'm just wondering if it's the same as what we've.
Dan, it is the same as it was last year. And Community Rivers Program also does provide day activities during our summer parks programs if we do have it.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Not to keep doing it, but I will make that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. And, um, are you getting them? It's a motion in a second. It's okay, Bill was. I just kind of ruined myself. Okay, I have motion and a second. And if there is any questions, if not, I will call a vote. All those in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Of course, motion carries. Um, okay, motion to approve resolution for inclusion under Wisconsin State um, deferred compensation program. This is one of the programs we're migrating from Sun or from Lincoln, I think this is going from to the state.
Mr. President, I, I can just summarize the, just the next three. That might be easier for you guys. So if you.
We can do those in a bunch of support.
Yeah. Um, so if you look at your memo, I kind of broke it down. You have three different resolutions you're passing for three different state programs. One is deferred compensation, which allows you, allows the employee to set aside dollars, um, into a tax-free savings account. The next one's can income continuation, which just provides short-term, long-term insurance. And then life insurance, which obviously is a death benefit that would get paid out. So all three of these just are automatically included by you guys being a part of W R S. All you have to do is pass a resolution and then we can join them. So they're nice kind of add on, added benefits. Um, as far as the costs, the deferred compensation, if, if, if an employee would be elected to do that, they pay for that premium. There's no cost to the village. Um, income continuation is a completely free program period just by joining the program. And then the life insurance obviously has premiums that both the village and the employee would, would elect. Um, you'll see in our resolutions that we've selected all of the options for insurance. But again, the employee would need to choose the level of insurance that they want and then they're going to be paying for that level of insurance too. When you break that all down, cause as President Doorward stated, you currently have existing plans through Sun Life. There's actually going to be a cost savings because since you're not, not going through sunlight anymore, the short and long-term coverage that was costing you again is now free. And then the life insurance that they would have been paying, paying, uh, sunlight now is getting paid to the state. So it ended up being, you know, savings for us to switch over to these programs. So again, it's just another benefit by joining the state.
All right. So we are in order for. You end up, okay, D D and F, second. We have more than the three, any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those boys. Motion carried unanimously. Um, all right, motion to approve and play handbook additions. There's a couple of revisions that we, that came up.
Yep. So we had our full-time staff meeting, uh, what they're, the entire handbook, front to back. It was really exciting. They, they just loved it all. There was two items that were brought up by staff and it sounds like either were in your previous handbook that they wanted brought into the new one or it was promised to them, whatever that means. So the, you'll start with the bereavement funeral leave. So you did have an uncle and aunt policy in your prior handbook. Um, that was just left out, um, of this new one. Their, their ask is to just bring it back to this policy. So that's what's, um, shown under F. And then under safety equipment, it sounds like when you switched, uh, whoever was providing your safety clothes, when you guys did that altogether, uh, staff were communicated, uh, whoever did that communicated that a new employee would get seven hundred and fifty in, in clothing dollars um, to, you know, to, to purchase their clothes again, if it's the first year. And then every year after that would be the three fifty that's in the handbook. So that's the recommendation is that for a first-year employee. So in this case, this year would be our, um, Eric and our new employee, why am I blanking on his name? Jason, thank you. Um, those two would be entitled to the seven fifty, but then everybody else could just get the three fifty. Then after this year, assuming that we don't turn over employees, they just get the three fifty. Um, so that was their ask, just because the cost of brand new equipment for every, for everybody is pretty costly. I said that that one would be left up to you guys. What do you want to do there now?
They don't have, uh, regular, uh, you know, village shirts and stuff, do they?
This isn't that. This is safety equipment for like using your.
Yeah, you get it. But I mean, well.
So if you didn't adopt this, then everybody just gets three fifty a year, period. And that's how it currently reads.
Yeah, a new employee coming into our employee has to buy one of each, it has to buy the whole, the whole wardrobe, jackets and pants and, um, sweater vests and, you know, everything because they're all colored and they're required to be a certain. Um, as through attrition over the years, while you get a hole in it, this wears out whatever, the three fifty here is to maintain that wardrobe. So that's the reason why we added this because we hadn't thought about that one, we were doing this.
Stands pretty reasonable. I make the motion through the handbook additions with the exclusion of item five. And uncle is.
Are you, you don't want to, because they have nothing?
Nowhere ever that I've ever worked, as it was with it. And uncle, I guess, I, it's, where do you stop, right?
Yeah, you have to stop.
Well, like I said, it was in your previous policy. That's why it was getting brought up. So.
Okay, I have a motion to include the language in number three, but not, uh, have a fine.
So if you don't include that, aunt or whatever, in the person, that's for compensation, correct?
So they, if, let's say, if somebody were to pass away in enter on full, they would attend a funeral, they would use P T O now. And it wouldn't be an addition. It would be counted as like bereavement.
But if they do take off for that funeral, for not to be reverberant, it's just that it's not.
Right. This is her agreement, they all.
Yeah.
A second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. To include the changes except for have a fine. Any questions on that?
So that was in our old one, our old handbook?
I should clarify, sorry. Your old handbook had different amount of days for different people. People who passed away, and I believe uncle and aunt were two days. But being that your new policy simplifies everything just to three days, period, it's easier just to kind of add them in here. If you prefer, we can say, you know, it's two days, but.
I thought aunt and uncle was one day.
Oh, was it one?
I think it was one day.
Okay, thanks, Melissa.
Yeah, there's that's the first time this uh is in contention. This was questions a number of times over the year. I don't know how it got in the in the first place, but historically we've done this, but it's been challenged a number of times. Like nobody does this, this is it. It's just an error. So the motion is to include the language, to accept the language except for that. I have motion and a second. Any discussion? There are none, I will call a vote. All those in favor? Alright, alright. All of the towards name. Okay, we have one eight. Okay, the majority is uh in the affirmative, so motion passes. Alright, um next we have uh. Questioner eight correspondence. Do you have any written correspondence or brillo? Very none, we items for future consideration. Were were you able to touch base with the marshal to see, to check on that insurance that we had discussed?
Which insurance?
Okay, there's none of these covered that. We're still looking for that particular insurance.
I don't know.
Don, are you talking the workman's comp insurance you had talked to me about?
Yeah.
I did talk to our insurance agent, and yes, they are covered as well as our uh volunteer firefighters. State requirement that our workman's comp insurance, if they get hurt at our job, it will cover them on their full-time job as well.
Okay. So then that is no longer done by a separate insurance policy?
No, no, it it's a state requirement. Um if they get injured at their full-time job, obviously, we don't. Cover that. However, if they get hurt on our job, we cover them.
On both.
On their other job.
Okay, alright. Okay, that's what I was worried about. Alright, um any uh I just.
Yeah, it's just uh. I guess I want to find out that. We at this point have not. Done anything for the officers and service and acknowledge the service. Since I've been on the board and I think several boards poorly, uh it's been standard practice. Important this goal that we would. Acknowledge things.
We have talked that over um. Melissa had talked about it, and she thought it would be um. Good for us to um do all of those on this side of staff that says. And we could, we could do one for them, or we could do all of us. All this together. And we're trying to just give it anyway done together. Unless you would rather. The sentence especially done.
Well, I just think it would be good to have that done at some point. So if it's already been thought of, we just want to bring it up.
Yeah, I was heading out to that. I've got a statement on my desk at home to remind you to uh. To get that accomplished.
Awesome.
Alright, anything else? We are in order to adjourn. Motion adjourned. Second, all in favor? Right, everyone? Period. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That's my man. I guess.